Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this regular Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Today is Thursday, October 23rd, 2025. It is 7:30 PM. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
... and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda next is public comment and participation. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. My name's Laura Consiglio, and as many of you know, I've been a resident of New Fairfield now for over 25 years. I wanted to start with some comments from the last meeting, from the end of the last meeting, addressing some of the comments that Selectman Perkins made at the close of the meeting, defending the need for the attorney involvement in reviewing and redacting the FOI materials, stating that it was unfair to criticize Melissa for the delays and costs associated with the process. Yet, over the last several months, Selectman Perkins has repeated a familiar talking point, blaming residents for those FOI requests, as though the public's pursuit of transparency were the reason the legal costs are ballooning. So let's be clear, FOI is not optional, it is not a burden, and it is an essential part of good government. Blaming residents for exercising that right is unacceptable and deflects the real issue right now, the town's lack of management and oversight of its attorney. During that same meeting, Selectman, First Selectman Lindsay stated that a current employee had authorized discussion of a '22-23 personnel matter in open session. That claim was made without ever naming the employee in public or having them appear publicly to waive their right to executive session under Connecticut General Statute 1-206A, which specifically provides that a public agency may enter into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee unless the, in executive session, unless the individual requests in writing that the discussion be held in open session and personally appears to waive that right. No such appearance occurred. The employee was never named on the record, never appeared at the meeting, and therefore, I am not sure that a valid waiver occurred under the statute. Selectman Delmonico was placed in an extremely vulnerable position, expected to respond to a sensitive personnel matter without having seen the alleged written waiver and without any verification that it was legally valid. I felt, Melissa, that your handling of that discussion was belligerent and overly excessive, overly aggressive, pressing forward without confirmation that proper safeguards in place. Pat's hesitation was not only understandable, I think it was the only responsible course of action in that set of circumstances. So now on to a familiar topic, our FOIs. On March 3rd, I submitted a FOI request for Attorney Herbst's agreement with the town and his billing records from July 2024 through February of 2025. On July 10th, I submitted a second request for invoices from March of 2025 through June, and a request for any charges incurred through July 10th so that I could better understand the cost of Herbst's involvement in the Simkins matter and his personal appearance at that meeting. Two days ago, I finally received a 174-page PDF of redacted invoices, which the First Selectmen's Office stated was responsive to both of those FOI requests. However, the invoices only go through February of 2025. Nothing from March through July was included. And more concerning, 84 of the 174 pages, nearly half of them, fall outside of the requested period, and included invoices from December of 2023 through June of 2024, and two duplicate invoices. Those were not requested. This is not a clerical mistake. This is a calculated tactic by Attorney Herbst to inflate the production, overwhelm the requister, and pad his billable hours once again for redacting pages that were never required or requested. And there is no doubt, he will bill the town for redacting those non-responsive pages. So whoever processes future invoices, please be sure that those are reviewed carefully. This also demonstrates that the process we have is not being managed by our elected officials, but the process is being managed by the attorney. So in summary, as we've talked about what exactly our fees are paying for, the total of the invoices I received, which is over a year's worth, but it is not the fiscal year, so this will not match up to our budget lines, total invoices was $187,344. Broken out roughly as follows. Over $99,000 of that was for labor and employment matters. Interestingly, almost half of that amount, 42, almost $43,000, was billed for just January and February of 2025 during the height of our union unrest. ZBA appeals accounted for about $10,000 of that total. General retainer litigation accounted for $33,000. General retainer non-litigation accounted for approximately $31,000. And here's the kicker, the FOI-related work that was identified as such in those invoices accounted for about $1,600, less than 1% of that total. And of that $1,600, close to $1,000 of it was for a single FOI hearing that Attorney Herbst forced by delaying producing his own records and had to appear. $1,000 for him to show up. The numbers speak for themselves. FOI is not what's draining our budget, Timothy Herbst is. It didn't surprise me to learn also that Timothy Herbst has previously appeared before the Freedom of Information Commission for the same exact issue, delaying the release of his own invoices in another town. This is a pattern of obstruction and self-interest, not caution. During that February 13th meeting, Attorney Herbst stated on the record that he and others in his firm had reviewed multiple employee contracts. After identifying a six-month severance clause in one, he declared he would need to go back and review all of them. There is no record in any Board of Selectmen minutes or agendas showing that this board directed or approved that expanded review. Similarly, there is no record authorizing his overreach at the July 7th Simkins meeting, where two attorneys appeared in person to confront, two confronted department had just four days before his retirement. These were self-initiated actions that generated fees but produced no tangible public benefit. This is how he operates. He inserts himself, escalates the matters, and then sends the bill. So to be clear, Timothy Herbst is the kind of attorney who gives attorneys a bad name. He is not acting as neutral legal counsel, he is acting as a private opportunist, taking advantage of a first selectman who lacks managerial experience and the judgment to control his scope or spending. Melissa, you have allowed this attorney to operate unchecked, without documentation, without accountability, and while this board has blamed the residents for escalating costs and the cost of transparency. The town of New Fairfield deserves competent management and responsible oversight, not continued exploitation of its taxpayers through legal opportunism. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, since we're on the subject of freedom of information requests, I want to bring up the fact that when the school building project was in the very early stages, my father and I went to the building department and also to the Selectmen's Office. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. Monica Teal, 66 Gilati Road.
Thank you.
We went there multiple times asking to see the plans, and we were told that they were not available. We were told that by the Board of Select, by the Selectmen's Office, I'm sorry, and we were also told that by the Building Department Secretary, all right? It took multiple us requests and actually participating in the permanent building committee and bringing it up in public comments, so it was on the record, that we desperately wanted to see the plans because it was affecting my father's property. It was a runaround. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, that information should have been readily available to us at that time. Then, a second matter, I called the Selectmen's Office about the crosswalk when people were outside spray painting Gilati Road, okay? I was told that the Selectmen's Office didn't know anything about the crosswalk. I called back again and asked again and was told again that the Selectmen's Office didn't know anything about the crosswalk. Finally, I used the magic words, pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, please provide any information you have about this crosswalk. And the response that I received back from First Selectman Delmonico's office was they had no information and no knowledge of anything having to do with the crosswalk. Subsequently, I found in the meeting minutes discussion that the First Selectman had about crosswalks. This was clearly a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Had it not been for COVID, I would have filed a complaint. So to go ahead and say that, you know, there are issues here and there have never been issues before, is incorrect because there were issues. And I don't know what's worse, lying and saying that you don't know anything or trying to satisfy a request that you received. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move number 13 up to number four. Oh, I'm sorry, just, yeah, no, I'm right. Number 13.
So it'd be 4A because you're still going to do correspondence and announcements?
If we could move number 13 up before correspondence and announcements.
Right, okay, so it would be 3A.
3A, yes.
3A.
Just so that poor Suzanne doesn't have to hang out too long. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So we are going to now move to discuss and possibly vote to adopt the modified depreciation schedule for assessment of motor vehicles. We did receive a letter from our assessor's office. This is something that was enacted by the state back in... Oh my goodness, I lost it already. It was last year, correct?
July 24th was the end.
July 1, 2024.
Okay. Ultimately saying that the way they had changed the assessment of motor vehicles ultimately left most towns, or many towns like ours, with a lower grand list because the way they now assess motor vehicles is based on the MSRP flat, and it was an 85% assessment. So with that, we do have the option to change the way that 85 is assessed to 90%, but I am kind of butchering the explanation. So Suzanne, if you just want to jump up and you could head to the mic, and this is our Assistant Assessor, Suzanne Browning.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Browning, the Assistant Assessor for the town. So for those of you that don't know, Connecticut is an ad valorem state. We're supposed to be taxed on our values. But last year, in July, the legislature decided that motor vehicles are going to now be taxed by the MSRP times a depreciation schedule, which started at 85% and descended to 15% at 19 years and stayed there for the rest of the older cars. Immediately, the town saw their grand lists were pretty much obliterated. We lost so much of our grand list for motor vehicles. The impact that has is it means that the other grand lists, personal property and real estate, are going to have to carry the burden of the taxes. So all the assessors complained to the legislature, and they said, okay, sorry, we made a mistake. We'll change it. We'll start the depreciation schedule at 90%, but we're not going to make it mandatory. We're going to allow your town boards to decide whether we're going to change it or not. Out of the 169 towns in Connecticut, 107 did it immediately. We didn't do it immediately because we'd already signed our grand list. We already had our Board of Assessment Appeals. We would have had to redo everything. It would have cost the town a lot of money to do that. So we opted to wait to change it for the 25 grand list. The impact that it's going to make on the people of New Fairfield is going to be fairly minor, I believe. The depreciation schedule now for one-year cars is going to start at 90%. What that means is the MSRP of a one-year or newer car, so for the 24 grand list, it would have been 24, 25, 26 models. The MSRP times 90%, then times our 70% assessment depreciation, and that would be your assessment. All it's going to do is it's going to impact this year. The assessment you had on your vehicle this year is going to be the assessment you have for the 25 grand list. It's not going to change because we're going to move you up, and everybody that was 2018 at a depreciation schedule of 55% is now going to be at 55% because it's a 25 grand list year and the car is a year old. So the assessments are going to stay the same this year. The grand list is going to go up for motor vehicles, hopefully affording the real estate to go down a little bit. And this is the only year it's going to impact you because from now on, every year, it's going to depreciate by that 5% based on the age of your car. The newer cars used to be assessed at 70% of the MSRP. That was strictly it. It was 100% of the MSRP times the 70%. Now, they're getting a 15% discount off their new cars to start with, and then the 70%. Really, the impact is going to be on the people with newer cars, and I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. It's still going to give them a break from what they used to have. So anybody has a newer car, that's had a newer car in the past, you were assessed at 100%. Now we're only assessing you at 90%. So I really think this is going to make a difference. I think most of the other towns will come through for this year because we have seen it. It really has been a big impact on the grand list.
Questions?
I ran the numbers. I was curious how this would work out in actual dollars. So I took what I consider to be a fairly popular car, Ford Explorer, 2025 Ford Explorer, with a few options, at $50,605, brand-new MSRP. And I ran the numbers from 85% down to the 90% down. And regardless of how long you keep your car, at the 90%, you're going to be paying more taxes. Overall, with a, and I went with a capped mill rate of 32, just to run a number. Over 20 years, at the 85%, you'd pay $9,181.76 in taxes. With starting at 90%, you'd pay $10,031.92 for a difference of $850.16 over the life of the car. I also ran it at a 26-mill rate, the difference being at the 85, starting with 85%, over the 20 years, you pay $7,587.70. And with the 90%, you pay $8,278.46 for a difference of $690 over the course of 20 years. Regardless of, if you look at it at, say, at three years, let's go with the 26-mill rate. Three years, if you own the car three years and you get rid of it, you're paying $2,210. With the 90%, you're $2,348. So there's 130-some-odd dollars difference there, more.
For three years.
The 90%. At five years, it's the same thing. It's with the, regardless of what it is, with the 85%, you're paying less taxes than you are with the 90%. Now, while I realize that this is better for the town, well, the 90% is better for the town, for the town's grand list, it's not great for the taxpayer because they weren't enough paying more taxes on the car. That was, that was why I ran these numbers because I just wanted to see how, how is this going to be good for the taxpayer? It's not just, it's not just the town's grand list. I mean, I understand the town's grand list will change the mill rates, but still, overall, even at a 26-mill rate that we're at now roughly, you're going to be paying more taxes with, using the 90% depreciation schedule.
But wouldn't those car owners or those individuals see savings on the other side, right, their personal property or their home?
That, I can't answer that. I wasn't taught, I wasn't running numbers on personal property like homes and things. I'm only running it on a car.
But that's how, because we're adding to the mill rate, it would end up spreading it out so that the savings would be realized on the other sides, on the, the real estate, the personal property.
That's only if the mill rate changes because of the higher grand list. I'm not sure what you're asking, Melissa. All I know is that it's going to...
Suzanne, go ahead.
It's going to cost you more.
I'm confusing myself.
Your overall taxes are going to cost more with the 90%.
So the way, so the way you figure your, your mill rate is you take your grand list.
Right.
All of them.
Right.
And you combine them. This is the money you need, this is your grand list. You take the grand list and you divide it into the, into the budget, and that gives you your mill rate.
Right.
So if you increase the motor vehicle grand list by, and I did my numbers, the, if we had done it on the 24 grand list, we would have increased the grand list by $132,747.92. That would have come off the real estate side because you would have a higher grand list, so your number would have been... list, so your number would have been, you would, you would have had the same mil rate or the same difference, but it would come off of, now the real estate wouldn't be paying as much because of the way, you have to, you have to put all those numbers together. It's not just the motor vehicle. I did some numbers myself and the thing that I don't think that most people understand is that these newer vehicles, first of all, most people aren't like me and they don't hang on to their cars for 100 years until they drive it into the ground. There are some of us that do that, but a lot of people get new cars, new cars, new cars. We're trying to be respectful of people that have older cars. I did the, I did the numbers and if we increased just the newer cars, this year it would have been the 24, 25, and 26. If we had increased it by the 5% this year, we would have increased the, the amount of money, the amount of assessed value to $1,637,367. That would have been the increase. For the old cars, it would have been up by almost $5 million. You divide that by the average number of cars. There's over 10,400 older cars from 22 down. It would have made a $13 difference, average. Now that's, obviously the 22s are going to be a little bit more and the ones that are 2005s are going to be a little less. The average difference for the older cars would have been $30 a car. The older, the newer cars are the ones that are going to be impacted by this. And like I said before, I tried to explain, before it was 100%. We didn't depreciate those at all. So even the people that have newer cars with this new policy, not, not even basing it on the values really, they're going to see a benefit as well. The entire motor vehicle grand list is still going to be substantially less than it was when we did it by clean retail value. I've done the numbers on several different cars, the Honda CRV, the Toyota RAV4 and Subaru Crosstrek. And for the newer ones versus an older one, it's over $1,000 difference between the assessments. So the difference in the assessed value for the, for the older cars is significantly less impacted by this than the, than newer cars.
Okay, I, forgive me because I'm not that much of a financial guy, but I really don't understand. All I know is that when I get my, and I want to understand this lo, your logic. All I know is that when I get my car tax bill, says this is the value of your car and this is the mil rate and this is how much you owe in taxes. And that's kind of what I did here. And I see a difference. So I, I just want to know why, for instance, somebody owns a car five years, has a $200 and some odd dollar difference between the 85% that we currently have and this 90%.
Like you said, it's really good.
Because I don't under, I want to understand.
So again, it would be different, but the, it's offset by the, you know, by the real estate and that was kind of the hard, I mean, that was obviously the hardest hit this year. So I think it would almost.
But it's the same mil rate for, for your property tax, for your houses, it is for the cars.
Yes, because the mil rate is.
The mil rate's the mil rate.
Right.
Right. So how does, how does that make a difference?
So the mil rate would change based on the fact that the grand list is bigger.
I understand that.
The grand list is bigger and therefore the amount of taxes doesn't change, right? So the amount of taxes that we need to run the town stays the same.
Is that going to give the homeowner, the property, the car owner, is that going to give them a benefit?
I think it's going to stay pretty similar.
I think it depends on your, what volume of your property.
If we had done it last year, pardon me for interrupting. If we had done it last year, $132 million would have been increased in the grand list. Divide that into the budget, it wouldn't be 26.33. It would have been more like 25.50. Therefore, the car bill, even though it's going up, is going to go down because the mil rate's less and your real estate's going to go down also. It's going to be less. You need the same amount of money regardless.
I would really love to see the, see a couple of example numbers on paper because I'm not, I'm not rocking it as well as I'd like to. So I do, I want to believe you, I want to believe that this is going to be better for the taxpayer.
So ultimately, the formula for a mil rate is the taxes that we need to run the town, so whatever the budget is decided on, and the grand list.
I understand how we arrive at a mil rate.
Okay, so the mil rate would be lower because the grand list is higher. So ultimately, when you have, how many cars did you say, 10,000?
14,000.
14,000 cars.
Wait a minute, there's one car for every person in town? Does that include children?
Yeah, well, there's 13,000, I believe.
Some people own quite a few cars.
There's 1,400 newer cars, 1,440 newer cars, and there's 10,500 older cars. That's not including the ones that are older than 20 years, which we didn't even put into the mix because they're, we keep them. Our town has decided to assess them at $500. Other towns are using this new depreciation schedule and the older cars are being taxed more, but we've decided not to, so.
Okay, well, I would really like to see an example of this and how it affects the mil rate and comes out in favor of the taxpayer being lower because I just don't see it. I just don't see it. It's me, it's not you, believe me.
Well, I wish I had, more than two hours notice that there was a meeting.
I understand, I understand. But if you do that for me personally, I would really appreciate it and I'd like to then table this to the next meeting because until I understand it, I can't, with conscience vote for the 90% unless Melissa and Pat outvote me. That's.
We are, we are currently, it is past October 1st, so we do have our current grand list in the works and so the longer it takes to do it, the more it's going to push it off for us to establish that.
So if we tabled this, this would end up being next year, correct? It would not?
No, no, no.
Because our next meeting is not until after November 1st.
I, I'm not sure we have another choice if we don't pass it for the 25 grand list. I, I'm not sure. I would have to, I don't know if we could vote on it for the 26 grand list or not. It was, it was an option in May when they, the legislature realized they'd made an error. And I think that, that alone would tell you that if they realized they made an error and they made this whole new choice for us, that they see that the error in their ways too, so.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I just want to understand. That's all I want to do. I just want to understand by seeing hard numbers as to, okay, if this happens and that happens and this mil rate goes up and that goes, mil rate goes down and that goes up, I want to see that there's an absolute benefit to a car owner in town that that's going to be better than the 85%. I just need to see that before I can really have an opinion. I need the facts. So like I said, unless Melissa, if Melissa and Pat are for this and they outvote me, we're fine. Otherwise, I would like to table it until, or have a special meeting sooner than, sooner than that in order to do it because I'm just not comfortable right now, Suzanne. It's not you, believe me. It's not personal. I'm just, I just want to do the best thing for the taxpayers in town.
I do believe I support this. I understand that it would spread it out more and it just lessens that burden a little bit, that, that hit that everybody felt. And again, it's ultimately, we're looking for the same number, so it's just a matter of spreading it out and, you know, which bill it ends up on in reality.
And like I said, once you do it, then from here forward, it's not like we're going to change it every year. It's going to still descend the way it should.
I understand. That's why, that's another reason I want to make sure I understand this perfectly because if it is a permanent thing, I want to do the best thing for the taxpayers in the town. It's the only thing I'm interested in.
You have any comments, questions?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
Do you want to, ready to vote?
I am ready to vote.
So I will make a motion to elect, to apply to the assessment year commencing on and after October 1, 2025, the modified schedule of depreciation with respect to motor vehicles based on the manufacturer's suggested retail price of such motor vehicles as described in sub-paragraph B of subdivision 7 of subsection B of section 12-63 of the general statutes as amended by Public Act 25-2. Can I get a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. I really appreciate your, your work.
Okay, on to number four. Correspondence and announcements, quite a few for this evening. The Tricks and Treats Festival will be tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30. There will be increased pedestrian traffic, including children and families in the town center, so hopefully everybody got the message on Everbridge. If you didn't, sign up for Everbridge because that's where the messages are going out. There is a multi-board listening session this Saturday at the senior center right here in the community room from 9 to 10. Early voting has begun at Town Hall and will continue through November 2nd. Normal hours are 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Extended hours are on Tuesday, October 28th and Thursday, October 30th from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And obviously, Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th. Polls open at 6:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. Communications, we received an email from Alan Fabiano, who is not happy with the town park hours. Breezy Grenier requesting a meeting with me. Several from a resident regarding an ongoing leader, legal matter that cannot be discussed publicly. Patricia Byers discussing speeding and a blind driveway sign on Gelati Road. Kimberly Alvarado asking to place a small yard sign in town to promote an upcoming event. And Stephen Chiquet, follow-up on an interview. Pat, you have anything?
Nope. I do not.
You've got the ones I got. I was going to do some.
Well, I would have given you some if I knew.
No, it's all right.
All right. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen regular meeting, October 9, 2025?
So move.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have no personnel report tonight and no budget transfers tonight, so we will go on to the tax refunds. Okay, A-Car Leasing LTD, $530.29. Robert and Dawn Marie Convoy, $12.45. Enterprise Fleet, $28.73. Joshua M. Foley, $106.90. Robert B. Guile, $50. Alan Kluberg, $110.12. Edward and Margaret Nevinger, $23.22. Daniel O'Donnell, $16.23. Chris Postigon, $11.48. Vault Trust, $1,587.62. Michael Vince, $12.77. And Catherine Waters, $6.66. So I will make a motion to approve the tax refunds as requested by the tax, as recommended by the tax collector.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there are also no appointments for tonight. We did have as number 10 on our agenda, update and discussion with the Permanent Building Committee. I did reach out to them twice on October 14th and October 16th, requesting them to come tonight to give us an update on both the school building projects and the bus lot. The second email outlined some of the items that I had hoped to discuss, including financials and scheduling for the bus lot, things like that. However, I did receive an email back this morning from Mr. Kellogg, the chairman of the Permanent Building Committee, saying that he was having some trouble with his email and did not see it until this morning. So they were not able to make it. So I'm not sure if the whole board didn't see it or if Don was the only one to respond, but hopefully they can come to our next meeting and give us that update. So we will move on to discuss and possibly allow the First Selectmen to lock in fuel rates for fiscal year July 1, 2026 through June 30, 2027. Can I get a motion to allow? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This is pretty standard for the year. We want to get the best prices we can, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to the MOU for shared financial services. This was worked on by Adam, our finance director, myself, the superintendent, and the Director of Business and Operations, Carrie Depew. A lot of work, a lot of back and forth, but I think we came to an agreement that really does describe what we're doing now, which was kind of the goal for us, is that the last MOU was extremely outdated, had a lot of positions in it that didn't exist anymore. So we wanted to make sure that obviously we were following, following contracts, following the law, and really following what we're doing now. Any questions on this?
I thought it was very thorough. It just seemed, I don't know, it just seemed extremely thorough and very, very well put together and I have absolutely no red flags in it at all.
Well, that's good. Pat, anything?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, so I will make a motion to authorize the First Selectmen to approve the MOU for shared financial services.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we are back to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lori White. I reside at 28 Bear Mountain Road. I've lived there mostly all my life. My question is something for the bus lot, which I wish the Permanent Building Committee were to come tonight because this could also go to him. So basically, I'm going to address it to Pat Delmonico because it was her administration. So in 2019, did you and your administration actually and truly put the actual language of a bus lot, bus depot, or bus parking, or even the word "bus" in any of the 2019 town referendum votes for budgeting the entire school project?
I don't believe this is a back and forth.
Public comment is not back and forth.
Okay, all right. So then, my answer would be because of 2019, because I know it's not there, because the two 2019 referrals don't mention a word of any bus anything, and if so, any, and if I'm not mistaken, still needs an A-24 referral to the planning commission for a bus lot. So I feel that no matter where the bus lot goes, we're at a standstill because it's never going to get approved because it was never in the original referendum votes for the bus lot.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All righty. Oh, go ahead.
Monica Teal, 66 Gelati Road. So I just wanted to bring this up. It's unfortunate that the Permanent Building Committee wasn't here this evening because I heard something recently and I was hoping maybe they could answer my, my question pertaining to it. Apparently, there were bulletproof windows that were purchased for the high school in the amount of seven figures, which did not come in on time. So regular windows were purchased and installed instead. So I'm looking for confirmation on if that, if that actually happened. And if so, then what actually happened to the bulletproof windows? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will go to closing board member comments.
Yes, I can, I'd like to just address what Ms. Teal said. I spoke with Don Kellogg on that. This is a rumor that's been going around. There's absolutely no truth to it whatsoever. The PBC was only given a certain amount of knowledge of the security measures that were used in the school as a security measure itself so that nobody knows, no one person knows everything. He, he's been assured that all security, Don Kellogg said to me, I've been assured by Colliers that all security measures included in the design were implemented, that bulletproof bullet-resistant glass was installed at the points of vulnerability as determined by the school's security committee. So there was no storing or selling of any glazing. So I'd like to put that rumor to rest, the best I know from Don. Thank you on that. The only, I don't know, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, second?
Both second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.